Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. All present, with the exception of Brenda, who cannot make it this evening due to illness, so you can scratch that off. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda unless there is any changes that are...
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
I'll say... Move it. Rob and Kirk?
Yes.
End of the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the minutes for October 28th. Anyone see any amendments or changes that should be made?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kerry. Seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Schedule presenters, Matt Boss from Abdellak and Myers is here to present the audit and results. Matt? Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. I'm a manager of audit at Abdellak and Myers. I've been working on this since I started, so it's been about 10 years. It's nice to get there.
This one.
Yeah. There's a lot of projections that went in it. Well, luckily, you have two financial reports in front of you. One's the audit with the blue cover and one's the management letter. I'd say the management letter is more of the clip notes and that's what we'll be going through here for tonight's presentation. So if you flip open, just on that first page, a couple of things to point out is that we do conduct our audit, regular audit. We have the same opinion as what we've had in the past. It's called an unmodified opinion. This is what we consider a clean opinion. This is the highest that we can give for the audit, consistent with where we were in the past. One thing I will point out is that this year did have a single audit as well. What happens is when you have over $500,000 of federal monies that you spend, it just kind of automatically triggers additional testing over those federal programs. For fiscal year 13, it was like 505,000. It just went over that peak, so with that kind of goes some additional that there's not a lower risk because it's not a single audit each year. So there was a little bit of additional testing that... It's mainly compliance. You know, we're not doing anything different with the numbers. You know, that's what we are, as number geeks, as auditors. So we're focusing on that pretty consistently year in, year out. But with the additional requirements, for example, whether or not activities were allowable, whether or not you're reporting, like food service was one of those programs, are you reporting the correct number of meals? Is it... Are they compliant with eligibility requirements? With looking through these additional items, we didn't have any noncompliant matter that we'd be moving forward our audit, which is great to see, since it's not required every year. It's good to see when we do look at it, everything's upped up and shaped. So overall, our responsibility is to give that opinion about the financial statements. We do look at internal controls as well over reporting. More of this is to help us plan for our audit, but if we come across anything that we feel is kind of a significant matter or material weakness, we'll include that in our presentation here. With that, we do have three items that would be significant deficiency, kind of as defined on the bottom, on the bottom there. Not necessarily a large amount, but it's something that we think is less than a material weakness. You can't quite put always a handle on the number, amount of it, but something worth pointing out. Two of them carry over from what was here for last year for fiscal year 12, and then one went over. So if you flip onto the next page, page three, I'll try to just kind of hit on the highlights of some of these for preparation of financial statements. That one's carrying over from the past. It's in over 80% of our clients, not school districts, not just charter schools, cities, nonprofits. I mean, anybody, it's the most common finding that we have. The basis sense is, we get your accounting information and then we help prepare this book that's right in front of you. Some of it's formatting, some of it, there are new requirements that having us look at it and not internally results in this finding being here. What I do like to point out is, under the recommendation, kind of like last, second recommendation there, to agree accounting information, we know that your staff does that each year and looks over these notes and looks over the amounts, and that's what helps it from keep, from being that material weakness. It prevents it from being that higher level and listed just here as a significant deficiency. On page four, this audit adjustment, this is the new one this year. What I'd like to point out is that it's not the material weakness. It almost was an isolated instance, but for it being a little over 60,000 for an adjustment, being a one-time item, we identified in here. Pretty simple mistake, you know, that's why we're coming in as auditors, is to check some of those calculations and try to make sure there are no errors. With that, we've discussed it with staff and feel that that error won't be a reoccurring adjustment going forward. And then the next one is a carryover as well, just to remove signatures for staff as they're no longer employed. One of the common practices. Page five. First paragraph there kind of goes into some of those other compliance, other than the single audit that had those federal program requirements. There are some state requirements, for instance, looking at what's your checking and who's your depositors, looking at investments that are allowable. And with that, we don't have anything to point out here as significant items or noncompliance. Always nice to point that out, there are no findings. We did, under qualitative aspects of compliance practices, one thing I'd point out there is GASB 63 and 65 were implemented for the year, and really, all that was, was more descriptions in the financial statements, just changes in what was equity before, it was called net assets, now it's net position. There were a couple of things restated, but to be honest, they were less than 1.5% of your overall equity, so it didn't have a major impact on your financial statements for the new standard. Flipping over to page six, corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Really, there only was one adjustment that we made of a correction, and that related to that finding. So, nice to see that there weren't several. We like to usually give a lot of credit to your staff for all the preparation. You know, this thinking of the single audit, that wasn't one that was planned, that we were going to have to do that additional testing. So to not have any other corrections here is a good reflection of the work they're doing year-round, not just with the audit. And then, one other item on page six to point out, just a kind of a common recommendation for the board. Part of your process or involvement in internal controls is really the oversight, the monitoring. And so, as auditors, we like to see somewhat of a paper trail that things are coming across to you on a consistent basis to get a look over some of the financial information. So with that, we'd recommend some sort of quarterly reporting coming your way that's going to say how we doing with what we budgeted, what we anticipated for enrollment, to what's coming in right now. A lot of that, to be honest, for districts can be very difficult because it's so easy to get cash basis on what the state's giving you, and they're always kind of holding back and funding, and we'll kind of see that in some of the other results here, that if it's something that, if it's a matter of time for staff to get to it, to be honest, we can help with that as well, if that's something that you'd be interested in, that we can kind of turn around some reports that would be similar to the format we have in here. That could be maybe a time saver for you.
Want to get a meeting, or want some... Monsters and...
No, what he's referring to would be more of a quarterly statement, you know, where are we on our projections? What you're getting is what we're spending, and I think compared to other districts, we do give you a lot, actually. But what he's talking about is maybe a quarterly type, where are we for the... So that you don't get to the audit and say, "Oh, my gosh, we saved $400,000 this year. That's great." We know that we're on track to always be ahead and we're always watching our pennies, but what he's referencing is something that we kind of let you know maybe a little sooner than the actual audit, how far ahead.
Yep.
We're going to always be ahead, right, Matt?
Yeah. That's definitely the goal.
Right, right.
Sure, on that one.
So I think that's what he's referencing, Rob.
And kind of like what we're about to look at at page seven, if you flip over here, you know, it could be as simple as this, where it's just, where are our revenues, where are they looking at this quarter compared to what we budgeted, and hitting some bullets on what makes up those variances. So it doesn't need to be as detailed as what you're already getting, just kind of pulling back to what did we anticipate with the budget. So with that, looking at page seven, kind of the information going forward is more of the results, where did we end up for fiscal year 13? For the year, we did increase 660,000. That's nearly 58% of where it was at in the beginning. And what to point out there is that, that's not just looking at just your cash basis, but that is your overall accrued funds, including your payables, your receivables, all those change. The most significant item that comes out of there is within the revenues, you know, overall 530,000 out of a $10 million-plus budget. Really, three parts kind of hit that highlight. Taxes, you ended up about a quarter million, more than what was anticipated. With that, I think some of that is carryover in past budgets and possibly on how things are getting reconciled for like the tax shift, and that's kind of hitting on the next page. But really, it's, I think it's something kind of worth looking at fiscal year 14 to maybe see what that basis was, look at that support to make sure that now we're kind of budgeting more in lines with what we're levying. Maybe, since it has been more consistent, again, after what it was in fiscal year 10, maybe we can anticipate minimal difference from what we're levying or what we're projecting. And then the revenues for the states and federal sources. State were a little over 90,000 off from expectations, federal 105. I think the combination of the two partly was where the budget was for the FEMA, for the storm repairs. And then, so that, again, just something, to be honest, if I look at that out of a $10 million budget, you're looking at a 5% overall variance. It's not something that's jumping out to us as auditors. It's something worth looking into to see if it can get a little bit tighter, but it's not something to be real nervous about as well. Where I think it comes in most important, and same with expenditures, I should add that, you know, the second and the third bullets there. Overall, special education was more by 100, or more expenses than anticipated by 100,000. But then, sites and buildings ended up less than expected by 145. You know, there's always going to be some fluctuations, not only within specific programs, but just departments within that, you know, within specific areas. So keeping an eye on it, that's where that quarterly, how we falling within expectations, you're already doing a good job of what are we spending, and keep an eye on it. And that's where, as auditors, we just like pulling it back to what that budget was. So if we flip over to page eight, really where I try to focus in on is this expectation, you know, as, other than just our increase in fund balance and looking just one year, it's always good to look at that trend. What do we need it to be as a goal, as much as just the budget? So typically, we recommend 8 to 16%. That's going to be one to two months of reserves. Where it really drives home is that last year, your fund balance was 1.1 million, but your cash balance was about 290,000, and you had to borrow 1.2 million. It's how the state was just paying out their money. This year, they did a much better job of paying it out quicker, more timely, that you're sitting at, yeah, your fund balance is 1.8, but your cash is much closer, 1.5 million, and not having to borrow. I wish we could say that's going to be the expectation going forward, but really, all I can say is, it's the importance of keeping now where you're at, just under 18% for fund balance. You're right above that minimum recommendation, that two months, that if we can maintain that, it might prevent having to do any more of those eight anticipation notes in the future. But really, it's kind of all got to tie back to the board, what do you set as goals now going forward? Now that it's here, do we look at what increased in fund balances, spending those reserves back down when you had a one-year increase, or do we try to maintain, where do we go from here? Looking at page nine, this is that tax shift that I mentioned. What you see, what's tough to see, you know, visually, it jumped out when you look at 2011 for fiscal year. You know, the, both the tax shift amount and the net effect on revenue really have a spike there. In a sense, what they did was just to say that they're going to borrow some cash against what you're already getting from your tax levy. And then these other years where you see the blue, kind of closer to that zero line, 68,000 variance in '12, 36,000 effect here in fiscal year 13, that's where trying to maybe budget again, consistent with your levy. We're not sure how much that shift is going to change again each year. So that's something to consider to be with the budget. One thing to point out, which, whether I find it interesting, but that tax shift amount, 647,000, that's about 50% of what your levy is in your general fund. Now, considering that you're only getting optimally 50% of your levy by June, they're in a sense borrowing all that cash that you levy at June. Looking at page 10, what we have here is just a summary of the revenues over the last five fiscal years. The most significant revenue is going to be the state sources. You know, obviously, general education making up the largest piece, but then special education also being a big component of that as well. What we have for the increase in fiscal year 13, part of it is, you know, you had a new line item for literacy aid, that made up about 75,000. Had almost 50,000 that we recognized from the storm repairs from FEMA, the state portion of it. But then, you know, part of it too was just, for what your enrollment was, pretty consistent. The state did award a few more dollars per student, and so that made up the most significant piece, being almost, you know, between 400 to 500,000, just in general education, for keeping the same amount of students. As far as the rest of it, you know, the one other line item that kind of fluctuates there is your property tax levy. To be honest, part of that fluctuation is the tax shift, you know, where we saw that big spike on the previous page, that was in 2011, and that's how it kind of affected revenues. You see it on there in 2011 for a spike as well. Otherwise, for the most part, the other ones don't fluctuate too significantly. Page 11, expenditures per program. To be honest, here's what we like to see, is quite a bit of consistency within the lines, that, you know, this reflects what you do do really well of tracking your expenses, not getting out of hand, that they're within the levels that you have had in the past and with what you're budgeting for, for expenses, for spending. One that does have a little bit of fluctuation, it's kind of buried with all the others, but that district support services, it's the second line item there, that that, from where it was in '09, over half a million, the past two years has been under 300,000. So there's been some changes in cost there. Otherwise, another one that did have an increase, you know, to make sure it doesn't sound like it's a spike, but within that, sites and buildings, went up about 300,000, almost 200 of that, it relates to the storm repairs, you got fully reimbursed in federal dollars, federal and state. And then on the bottom, debt service fund. As far as what to point out there, the ending fund balance, 232,000. This was a decrease of 133,000. Now, what's important to note there is, how are you sitting with your cash compared to what you need? And right now, it appears seems to be a healthy cash reserve. That's with partly your general, your taxes coming in in June, that's already available then for those payments. So really, what we just recommend is for staff to keep an eye on that, yep, and what they're already doing, but continue, I guess is the recommendation, continue to look at what was scheduled for levies, that that's being done, and we'll still cover what's needed. Flipping over to page 12, we have your special revenue funds for food service, community service. Food service, not much, increased 15,000 compared to what some of the other amounts we were looking at, doesn't seem like much. But what's great to point out there is that it is an increase, and that, you know, you're not having to subsidize that at all by taxes or other money from the general fund, and that you're, right now, at minimum, we'd like to see, you know, a one-month reserve. It's above that minimum one-month reserve, so that's where it is for the results. Community service fund, this one, it did increase in fund balance, nearly 113,000. Last year, it increased almost 105,000. As far as that last paragraph there, mentioning a statute, what's interesting is that it seems like that statute's actually been repealed. So we have it in here more as a consideration. You know, don't know if they'd ever kind of put that requirement back on, but it's worth kind of reevaluating this fund and that levy to make sure that what's already there has a plan of use. And then on page 13, a lot of this is just kind of summary where we're at, you know, big picture, if you look at kind of the third balance, up that 19%, basically what we see as a whole for the district is that it's nearing your general fund at this point, you know, where your reserves are at, you know, a significant increase. So not only general fund, how we doing, but big picture, all our funds, there appear to be adequate fund balance reserves for what the needs of the district are. And then, as far as enrollment, you can see, just based on average daily membership, what per day, the last three years, very little variance, once all things said and done. So the expenditures, where that boils down to, again, what I'd say is, for fiscal year 13, before that looks like too much of a jump, nearly 200,000 storm repairs, weren't there last year, and they were fully reimbursed. And that makes up over, you know, if you're going to break it down, over $160 per pupil unit for all that calculation's going in. So, again, so I would say, you know, less than 8,500 is still much less than where it was 11 and 10. And then, really, for the remaining, there's some future accounting standards here. Really what I just wanted to note there is that there's going to be some changes. It'll affect fiscal year 15 for the district, but basically, there's some standards with PRA and TRA on how much they're unfunded compared to where their investments are from projections. The accounting standards say that everybody who is a member of that shares some of that obligation, and so there'll be a portion of that that's going to be on the district's financial statements in fiscal year 15. It's not going to change how you fund it, you know, you still have the same percentage. PRA and TRA, they do projections to have it covered in a certain amount of years, but it is something coming, and bond rating agencies, they do look at it, but they're already aware of those requirements, so I guess more if you ever get a call, yes, we are aware it's coming up and we'll be accounting for it.
If I get that call, you get that call.
Well, there we go.
It doesn't really matter.
Definitely. We do really like having those calls during the year because it helps for planning, and it's a common question that we're getting from other districts as well. What I would say, if you do want to see more detail than just what we went over here, pages 69 to 73 of the actual audit financials gives more detail behind the general fund. You know, it's going to have a comparison to what it was for fiscal year 12, and a more detailed comparison of departments as well. With that, does anybody have any questions?
You know, when I look at 13, general fund expenditures per pupil unit, if we put that into perspective with other districts that you may serve without...
That would be something that we can start putting in our management letter going forward.
Just based anecdotally on what you know, we've always kind of prided ourselves in really putting on a good product with lean per pupil expenditure. Do you see that here?
Well, without having given a comparison of that, what I'd almost like to do is come back next year and add kind of a peer group maybe ratio. Instead of even just our clients, why not look at the districts, surrounding districts, maybe take the 10 nearest and put that as that expectation, how are we doing to those districts surrounding us? Because without doing that right now, it's not something I looked up. I can actually follow up with Beth or Josh on that.
Yeah.
For ours as well.
Yeah, probably do that. Do you have any other questions for Matt?
I'd like to publicly thank Josh. This is a big undertaking for him especially. He's got a, basically, anything Matt asks for, Josh has to get. So he did a really nice job, and I know you guys have a good working relationship, and that really helps things out. So, thank you for all you did, and thanks, Josh, for all you did.
Yeah, and, I mean, we definitely noticed it as well, just with preparation, it gets, you know, more and more efficient each year. And actually, thanks to you too, and Lori for, you know, with Josh having, obviously, a very busy schedule for the last month, what other staff helped to step up too, to finalize the audit and be able to come here.
Sure.
So all around, very good effort. Thank you.
You're good to work, Coach.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. You know, this is the information that when you, when you talk to the community, it's really our bottom-line information. We can take that back to the community as to expenditures and revenues and how closely they're monitored by our, all of our staff, and they do an exemplary job. Good to see. Good report.
Yeah, just a couple of years ago, I thought about the general fund question, the risen level, to pretty much reaching the top level that we need to be at.
It's always, I mean, it's been one of your goals, even when I was hired, you said you wanted to increase that fund balance, and I think everyone's taken that very seriously and done what we can to make sure that happens.
That district support decrease, would that be our support staff?
No, I'd have to see what's in that, but that's not district support staff. That would be more Goodview County Ed District maybe and things like that. I'd have to double-check too what that exactly meant. Because he's got them all listed, we did get that, and that might be in the big book, what each category meant.
Next on our list is Cheryl, but she's not here. Derek, standard-based report cards and PLC discussion.
Would you come up here, Derek, just so we're sure?
Do both now?
Sure.
Yeah, you know, I think the biggest thing is, you know, I, the teaching staff approached me last school year and said, "You know what? We'd like to, we'd like to look into doing standards-based grading." Actually, it's standards-based reporting is really what, what I'm talking to you about is... You know, I, originally, I thought we should be moving in that direction, and I thought, well, it's probably too soon, you know, with some other stuff going on, but some teachers really wanted to kind of grasp it and go run with it, and I said, "Yep, I support you." So we went ahead with it in K through two. It's, you know, we finished our first round of it at the end of first quarter, and things just, things seemed to have gone quite well, at least from my standpoint, I haven't heard any negative comments on it. So my, the purpose of today is just to give you a little background about what it, what that is, why we're doing it, and then what to expect moving forward. And then I've got just some recommendations for you at the end. So basically, standards-based instruction. There's three levels to what I'm getting to with standards-based reporting. Standards-based instruction is what we do. Education in general has moved to standards-based instruction. We look at what the state and/or national standards are asking us to, to where we want to get our kids to. We, we base all of our curriculum purchases off of these standards. We, we plan our, our lessons off of these standards. We look at, we dig into these standards and look through our curriculum, we decide, are there any gaps? Are there overlaps where we don't necessarily need to cover it as intensely, or, you know, and then we fill in as needed based on these standards. Everything really is geared towards getting the kids to meeting these objectives or learning targets. So if we're teaching this way, I ask the question, why not grade this way? And standards-based grading then is really just grading on the development of skills and knowledge, what, what students can, what students know and can do, rather than just the completion of certain tasks. And then we provide them with multiple opportunities to meet that standard or exceed that standard. And, you know, that's where RTI comes into play. That's where we do all of our professional development around tiered instruction, tier one, tier two, tier three. Study Island is a good, a good example of that, where our Study Island program in three through five and then, and all the way up, you know, into the high school or middle school that we used to at least have, basically allows us to differentiate each kid based on those... on those standards. So if there's a certain standard that the kid is not doing well in, we can provide that extra support through program like Study Island. So again, I ask the question, if we're already grading this way, why not report it that way? So that's where standards-based reporting is, where it comes from. It's, it allows for better communication. It's, it's all about seeing more specifically where the students are at and where they are based on proficiency of that standard. So on, on your attachment, page six is a copy of our, I think this is actually a first grade report card. Yep, on the top it says grade one report card. And this is just an example of what it looks like. I know some of you, all of you don't have any elementary kids, so I just included it in there. You kind of see that our grading markers or indicators range from one through four with one being limited proficiency. What that means is that the student still requires continuous teacher support just for that particular standard. So it might be comprehension. Comprehension is, is one benchmark underneath the reading umbrella. And if the student requires continuous teacher support, we're going to, you know, let the parents know that in this particular area, not in reading, because they might be a very fluent reader. And so they might be proficient, proficient in fluency, but not necessarily in comprehension. So we, we dig deeper into, into each particular standard or benchmark and report on that. A two would be a developing, developing towards that standard, you know, getting closer but still needs additional practice. A three would be achieving grade level. That's, three is essentially where we want the kids to be. We want them to be three, that means they're mastering that grade level expectations. They're proficient in those standards. And then four would be exceeding the grade level expectations and four would be that above and beyond student who, who, you know, is understanding the grade level material and can go take that further. You know, because we are a four-quarter reporting system, there are certain topics, as you can see, that are, that are, at this time period, we're not covered at this point. So that's what the NC refers to. We are still grading on semesters for our specialist classes because they don't see them every day. And so that, that's the purpose for why you don't see anything there. So any questions on that before I move on to the last piece? It's really where education's moving towards. You know, we're not the first district nor are we the last to move towards it and it kind of makes sense and I feel good about it because the teachers feel good about it.
What grade level does this, will this eventually go up to?
Well, at least fifth grade. You know, I think eventually we'll have the conversation, middle school wise possibly, and I know some high schools have, have had the conversation, but that's, you know, probably in the future because obviously elementary doesn't affect GPA, college entrance, stuff like that, we don't worry about. Just how can we best communicate student progress to parents and because everything is so tied around standards in our instruction, it only makes sense to, to report to parents that way, so.
But I mean, you're looking at really four categories to cover what I guess I would consider now a larger place to become more definitive in the rating, you know, whether it's a ninety-eight, ninety-two, eighty-seven, you're going to four different standards. And I know you're going to have to lose the conversion, but I think the initial thoughts are how do I convert that? I know proficient would be passing, you know, developing, you know, that seems pretty broad. Is there a way that this gets broken down more or when a child comes home with the twos and threes, is this a concern? How far up on the threes or are they from the four? You know, it seems more.
You have to remember, three is mastered. I mean, they're proficient, they understand.
Four is exemplary, three is proficient.
You want them at a three. They're proficient.
Right. But I'm looking at.
A three and A is.
Well, I guess.
It's a natural question to ask. I'm glad you asked it.
And it's not, and I guess not really the A, but I mean, I like the grading percentage, just me old school. You know, you got an eighty-nine, okay, you got eighty-nine percent based on all the testing you've done, the homework you've done, you're solid. But now you go to, you're a three.
And, and so we're being more specific in what we're grading, we're being more vague on, on how we're grading.
How you're recording it.
So my question is, so you get an eighty, eighty-nine percent. So does that mean they know the standard or, I mean, are they proficient in that standard? Or do you think that they are still developing towards that standard?
I guess eighty-nine historically to me means that they're proficient and on the verge of exemplary.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and, and again, these are, these are great questions to ask. This, this particular presentation was just meant to be a general overview. These are the types of questions that we're, we're having conversations daily about. However, you know, so I would challenge you to really think, think about what, what an eighty-nine tells you about, about your student or about your own kid in, let's say, number, number and operations. An eighty-nine means that they have completed homework with an eighty-nine percent accuracy, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they are, they are proficient in that standard. It might mean that, that they got a lot of help from their parents at home on their, on their homework and that's good that they've gotten eighty-nine percent's worth of, of, you know, questions right, but does it necessarily mean that they're proficient in that standard when we assess them in school based on that standard?
As an elementary parent too, what I really like about this is the eighty-nine percent tells me in math in general that where there's, where they're at. Maybe they had ninety-nine percent in all of these categories, but in geometry, for whatever reason, they scored very poorly. What this does for me is it really pinpoints the different standards they're learning. What Derek said that's most important here here is if we're teaching it that way, you need to grade it that way. It's, it's not good to do one that's, you know, innovative and where everyone is going and then grade old school and it, it's not aligning well.
And that makes sense to me. I guess it's just how the reporting comes up. To me, there's two things that we look at is one is, is truly the student, what they're doing, how they're doing it, and how do we judge or grade knowledge? Just because they can take a test and guess well, is that knowledge? Or how do we prove their knowledge in the task set forth? I guess the other one is how do we accurately report that so it's understood to the student and to the parent and anyone else who needs, and the state I guess as well.
And remember, they're used to this though. This is how MCAs have been done. You get a proficiency and ACTs and all of those. I mean, they've already done all that, but a lot of parents are already very, very used to that.
And.
Yeah. Looking at your MCA scores then.
Right, but, but on the other hand.
But that's a general one to me. I mean, it's just kind of a throw against the wall. Here's a big wide general shot of everything going on, not quarterly, semester, yearly type. It's more of a, here we are, one snapshot, done. Next year, new snapshot, done, now we're going quarterly. And then if you go to the conferences, we, you know, with Dr. Master, how do we, you know, it defines, I guess, to me a little bit more detail. And it just seems to me this is like the MCA, once a year you're done, there's no real questions to ask, this is all the information you've got now.
And what we want to do is ultimately get away from maybe the mentality of, well, I need my, I need Johnny to do some extra credit to get that eighty-nine up to a ninety-two to get an A. We don't want Johnny just to do extra credit just to get that, just to, to get extra points. We want them to do meaningful work that helps them understand that standard. Because ultimately, we want the kids to leave Cana Falls High School, college and career ready, based on the standards that Minnesota has put forth or our national standards that Minnesota has adopted. And so we ultimately, we want to get away from that and I, and I anticipated that these questions being asked because they're great questions. And, you know, I first started grading as a teacher, I asked those same questions, why can't I just put percentages on here? You know, why can't I grade more in depth but just percentage? Because we don't, we want to change the whole thinking around grading and then ultimately reporting because we don't want just the completion of it to be sufficient. We want the understanding of it to be the focus of it, not necessarily a, a, we don't, we don't want to get kids to strive for necessarily as many points as they possibly can get, we want them to fully understand the material. I can tell it's not quite making sense.
No, I'm just, I'm going through thoughts in my mind. I thought kind of when, when we do our testing and homework, that's kind of what that lends to, but I'm sitting there going, okay, but my first thought was if I can prove you on one example that I am proficient in this knowledge, would that suffice then or do I need to do that repetitively over a bunch of different tasks, homeworks and tests still the same? Or if I can prove to you in a shorter period of time, I'm proficient here, I'm done with it.
Both questions. You know, ultimately, ultimately, teachers aren't going to go away from, you know, taking grades right now, especially, you know, when we move toward a three through fifth, third through fifth grade. Because we went to school with that same idea and so we understand what grading means. And so what, what ultimately what I'm trying to do is challenge you to think differently about really what is grading? What, what does that percentage or what does that number or letter on a report card really mean? And, and, and so that's the same thing I'm challenging the teachers to do is to think differently about the homework I give, how I grade the homework and my expectations of understanding of it. When I can break down a test into different strands that are, that are, that are based on the standards, I'm going to have a better understanding of that kid because I know now that they've got this strand, they're, they're developing in this strand, but boy, do they got this strand, they've got, they're proficient in this one. And this, I can, I can figure all that out in one test and just, and just report on, on, you know, these, let's say math, I can report on these three subject area or these three strands based on one test and I don't even have to give them a full score. The important thing is that I provide feedback to that student, meet with them and say, hey, listen, you know what, Johnny, you've got, I noticed that in this strand, you know, here are the problems that you didn't, that you didn't quite master or that you're not proficient in, this is the area that you need to work on. But I noticed in geometry and measurement, you got all of those questions correct. And so that's the type of feedback we want to offer students that we're ultimately getting to where it's, it's, if we're giving that feedback to the students, we want to give that same feedback to parents. We don't want to just give them that end number, if you will, you know, a percentage that, that doesn't tell them exactly what areas that they might, what that eighty-nine percent, they might be a hundred percent in that data analysis piece because boy, are they good at the, the reading the graphs and, and working with numbers, but that, the spatial geometry and measurement, they might be a seventy-two in that. And so yeah, it averages to an eighty-nine, but do we really know what the kid is good at and what they're not? So it's a natural progression to ask the question of, why can't we just tie it to it? What is an A then?
Because everything's been tied before, A's equalist, percentages B's equalist, so it's always they've tied back and forth.
And so I'm not going to tell you what I think tonight just because I, I don't want to put that in anyone's mind of, I don't want to relate the two. I want them to be different, I want people to think outside the box on this.
See, I see, I see where he's coming from because if a perfect score, if there's three parts to a math test and perfect score is a hundred and a kid gets sixty-six, now he got, got himself a C, but yet maybe it's one-third of that, it's three parts, maybe it's that one-third he didn't get and the other two-thirds he gets, this is going to allow them to understand that now we have to work with him on that one-third because he already understands the other two-thirds.
Right, I get that. I just, I'm looking at that thing going, we should be grading on each of those different strands in any fashion. You could do a hundred percent, a hundred percent, a sixty-six percent this way today. Instead of making it one test, it would be one test with three grades out of it or one test with the different strands. You can call it what you want, I guess it kind of looks the same, it's, it's different, but I can see where you can correlate those. But yeah, if you're going to give a test that covers five different subjects and you're going to give five different proficiency levels on it, that would be the same as five different grades on your test and say, you're a hundred percent, you're sixty-five percent, you're ninety-two percent, great, this is my focus area.
So, so two things, two comments on that. The first one is, I'm glad you brought that up. So we are actually moving towards creating our own form of assessments, which as a grade level, you can tie those into the strands or standards that you guys are working on as a PLC, which is going to lead into our next conversation, so hold that thought for a second. The other one is, we could keep it at a, at a percentage base and still do more standards based. And I think the reason why we don't and why the majority of districts don't is because they want to relate it back to the MCAs that Beth talked about and that's, that's how parents are reported on the MCA, which is proficiency of the, the standards in that grade level. And we want, I think the other reason is because, so we can get away from, from mostly the parents because that's how we were, we were taught and how we were graded, for them to get away from that perspective and to just think of it as a whole new type of, of grading. Makes sense? I think that's the reason. I, I don't, I, honestly, the reason that we went to it is because, so that's the common theme and it makes sense to match with the state of Minnesota, so.
I think we're just, we're developmental in this at this point in time, so, you know, discussion about maybe the finer points, we can probably forego, just what you want to do is give us an update about where we are and where we're going with it.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's been done. I would like to move over to the PLC.
Yeah, one, one last thing is, so with this, you know, a lot of times, you know, in order to get maybe a little less, a few less NCs on the report card, one of the recommendations and that what most schools or at least elementary's moved towards is a trimester grading period. I don't want to make a decision tonight, but I want you to at least keep that in the back of your mind for maybe a future date and/or the calendar committee. Because I, I think it'd be, it's worth having a conversation of, would that be beneficial to our teachers and our kids and our parents to have that longer grading period? Since really, we're grading on a whole year's worth of, of material and we're not looking at individual quarters. So reporting out wise, we're looking at how is that progressing based on the standards by the end of that grade level? So it lends itself to, to lengthen the grading period to a, you know, eleven to twelve week grading period instead of a, you know, eight week, eight to nine week grading period. And then, but also with conferences in the middle of those trimesters, at least in the first and third, which really is the same time period, we really wouldn't change any of the conference times, but it would give us an additional, you know, possibly an additional midterm type grading period if we wanted to report on that. It wouldn't be a report card, but it would be obviously opportunities for teachers to be in the mid, an actual midterm. Right now, our, our grades are kind of, our, our conferences are kind of not necessarily centrally located, so midterm really isn't a midterm, it's more of a three-quarter term. You know, because if, in a, in a nine-week period, if we have, you know, our first conferences at the end of September, first weekend October, you've got five weeks of not even really instruction, it's more so review, so you're not getting accurate grading. So I, I want us to have the conversation, nothing to.
I think in that case, and Ms. Wenchel is in the room, so I can say that and I know she'll probably agree with me, that would be something, if you're looking at trimesters and we've talked about it at admin level, you know, coming from the curriculum committee, that's where that recommendation needs to come from. No offense to our board members, but they're the experts, they're the ones sitting in that room and really understand what, how that would impact school. Certainly the decision comes down to you, but I would hope that a recommendation could come from your group. We've got both our admin reps on there. Would you agree, Mr. Bell, that would be the proper way to do that? And give you guys a recommendation so that it's been well thought out? In my opinion, that's how we should do that one.
Can you get a presentation up for?
Sure. Yeah, it was more so just FYI, just a heads up that we're going to have the conversation, so. So moving to PLCs.
Please.
PLCs, you know, I'm going to include Tim and make sure that he's in this conversation as well. We both, we both have a pretty good understanding of what PLCs are and what we want them to look like. However, we both agree that we don't, we can't necessarily bring them to the, to the forefront where we really want them to be. We don't necessarily have the, the time and/or the expertise to really, really get the teachers where they need to be. And so because of that, we, we looked into kind of what are other districts doing to really build that strong PLC model? And, you know, obviously Quentin Pettigrew, who is actually Cana Falls grad, didn't even know that, but on page seven, you can see a little bit of background of Quentin, you can see what, what some of the, the goals and what we would be getting out of this, out of this professional development with him. Some of the details, you know, basically we want, we want somebody to come in and really grab hold of it and. Some of the details, you know, basically, we want somebody to come in and really grab hold of it and run with it. We want, we want strong PLCs soon. We don't want to, we don't want to spin our wheels any longer.
And just to clarify, I think there were some earlier questions. The funding for this actually goes through staff development, which, again, Ms. Winchell is in charge of. She's got a lot of titles this year. So keep that in mind when you're looking through some of these funding things. They can spend that money, and it's great that the administration is there too, but they can help select how that money's spent. And I know they've done a lot of, because this takes a lot of their funding to do this, and they're in agreement too. So I don't think this is coming just from administration. This is a great example of everyone being on the same page and saying, PLCs are our biggest thing, we're making a time commitment, parents are letting us do late starts and seeing the benefits of all that. So with all that said, I know there's a lot of pre-talk on money on this. That's funding that's already, staff development has given that money, and how we spend that has to go through them. This would never have reached you had they not said, yes, we have a commitment to this, and that's where we want to spend the funds. So keep that in mind, too.
Right. Yeah, and I don't even, I don't even know if it was our idea, it was more so, like, brought to us, but we've, you know, are fully on board, it would be dumb for us to not do that because of where he can take us that we can't. And it, compared to what, you know, you can get from another company who were to bring this, you know, bring a person in, like a solution tree or someone, you know, this is a fraction of the cost. So, this, you know, he's just, he's someone who is passionate about it, who's done a lot of it, and he knows the impact that it can have on students. And so, you know, he's just someone that just wants to come in and do this. You know, the nice thing is, he's hands-on to an extent, but yet, he's not in here to completely guide it. He's just here to get things set up, and he knows how it can be done. He's worked with so many other districts our size and our demographics that, you know, he understands some of the pushback, he understands how PLCs should be set up, and gives us some strong recommendations. So, you know, we trust that, that what, that his details of consulting is accurate, and the time he'll spend here is time well spent, so. The cost, you know, the other aspect of it is, you know, we look at doing approximately six to eight, on the top of page 16 in your packet. We'd look at, you know, six, seven, six to eight PLCs, I think, per building. Even though we looked at, you know, our numbers, for money-wise, we went off of 18 just to be on the high side, just to be safe. That would equal up to nine per building. Depending on how Quentin decides to set up PLCs and how, what recommendations he makes to us, we may or may not have nine in each billing. It looks like we probably won't. So basically, you know, cost-wise, again, all of this has been through staff development committee, and has been approved and very much backed by them, and they're excited about it. Ultimately, he would be here for a full day a month, and then another half-day per month. So a day and a half is where you get that, be about $1,200 per month approximately. And then, you know, we're looking at, basically how he would set it up is, we would take facilitators, and that one day that he's in the district, he would meet with the facilitators, high school facilitators for half-day, the elementary facilitators for the other half, to equal his one day here in the district. He would train those facilitators. They would essentially, I mean, it's more work for them, but it's also more responsibility. And so that's where the idea of, you know, paying those facilitators a small stipend, compared to what Quentin recommends for other districts, and what other districts are currently paying their facilitators. So, it's important to know that. But because of that added work and responsibility, we thought it was appropriate, I shouldn't say we, by "we" I mean the staff development committee, which is ultimately who is paying it. It's not the district, it's the staff development committee, who decided to pay the facilitation.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm correct in what I had said before. The reason why the stipends of facilitators needs to come to board action, that isn't covered by that, and all stipends run through you.
Yep.
So I should have been clear on that. The funding for the program is what staff development is committed to, and brought back their 2%. Or wanting, it's on here, it's all listed, what they want to do for next year as well. But stipends are separate, so I should be clear on that.
And downward, down in the totals box, option number one should be crossed out. We actually got rid of that, I apologize, I didn't delete that row when I submitted it. So ultimately, we're looking at option number two there, and so, to finish out this school year, the entire cost would actually be less than $9,600, because I don't think we'll need 18 facilitators. I'm thinking more like 14 or 15?
I'm going to have seven.
So 15, because I think we'll have, we'll have eight, I think CM High School, Middle School have seven, and then I think J will have one. So ultimately, it would be six, and then, so it would be about $8,000, so.
This whole thing? No, this is kind of just slowly come up now, this first, I think I've heard of it. I mean, Bug doing the PLC.
Yeah.
It's not an action item today.
I do believe it is an action item.
Just like to approve the stipends.
Yeah.
PLCs, I look at it as from both sides, I guess. I understand what PLCs are designed for, and I see here, you know, start place of school improvement to the strength of work, teachers working together, cooperative teams to improve student learning, the newest improved models, your last data. Is there a way, I know we're talking about it at one point, I think, but increase in PLC time? Would it be more, more of it in a day? With these other schools that he's worked with, do we have anything that's tangible as far as improvements that we get to see as a district? And I'm not looking so much at the money, because I look at dollars, and they are there, and they're budgeted. But we're going to be taking away probably eventually classroom time from our kids with our instructors. And I know what the reason is, but I guess the other side of it is, what is the tangible improvement, or what do we get from that with less instructional time?
First, I want to say, you know, that's something that both Tim and I have considered, both, you know, and thought about and have conversations about. I'm going to speak to mine, I'll let Tim speak to his, but, so, the way I structured my schedule this year, down the elementaries, and adding the 10 minutes onto the day, I essentially added the, about 14 and a half days of instructional minutes this school year. And so, by doing, just changing our schedule and adding the 10 minutes on a day, I've added 14 and a half days instructional minutes. If we were to, let's say, increase our PLC time by a half an hour more, so we did a one-hour late start, because Quentin Pettigrew is going to say, the 50 minutes to 60 minutes that you currently have, especially when you do it in the mornings, is not enough. It's not enough to really get into a good conversation and to analyze data, and then to make decisions that ultimately change your instructional processes. And so, with that, we thought, well, let's think about this a little bit. And so, based on our calculations, if we were to increase that by, keep the 12 days a year, like we currently have for PLCs, and just double it essentially in terms of time, it would be equivalent to four and a half days of instructional minutes. That we would be utilizing, you know, in other ways, but yes, it would be four and a half days of instructional time, minutes lost, but at the elementary, we've gained 14 and a half. So it's still not 10 days of instructional minutes. But the reason that's significant is because ultimately, what we're getting by adding that time to PLCs is better lessons, better differentiation based on student needs, because of the extra time and now guidance in analyzing student achievement data, and making those instructional decisions to, you know, to change their instruction. And so you're getting a better education, yes, you're losing instructional minutes, but you're getting that, we feel, is a better education. Can that be measured? I can't say, I don't know. Hopefully, you know, with everything else we're doing, you know, ultimately, all of this work together, hopefully will mean increasing achievement for all of our kids at Kennefolds. There's not, I can't answer the question and say, yes, we can just, you know, take this assessment or whatever and give you tangible data to say, here's, this is why PLCs are working. But we believe that this is going to ultimately help students. I want to let Tim talk about where possibly we gain those instructional minutes back, and why this wouldn't impact them.
When we started doing the late starts a few years ago, before the elementary did, we rescheduled our, we did, redid our schedule at the same time. And I think that first year that we did the half-hour late starts, we lost a day, because we eliminated our homeroom very hard time. We're looking at changing our homeroom structure next year anyway, and probably halving the amount of homework time we have, and, believe it or not, the math is a wash in minutes. So, we half our homeroom time by adding that back as instruction, or get the same amount of instructional time as we have this year, so we wouldn't lose that. And again, I'll reiterate what Derek said is, you know, I think that in the four years we've been implementing PLCs, we've seen increasing achievement and increasing test scores every year. You know, can I say that it's directly attributable to PLCs? Probably not, but I think that they are a big piece of why we're seeing increased scores, is because teachers are digging into data, they're being much more systematic about how they're looking at data and how they're looking at student achievement. And, you know, like Derek said at the beginning, this is really something that needs to be a teacher-led process. The facilitators are so important in this process, because if Derek and I can come in and mandate that teachers do these things, but there's not going to be the buy-in that there is if the teachers are taking this on themselves, and that's really the process that Quentin is going to take the teachers through, is looking at how you can take a look at a problem, how you can find the data that you need to solve that problem, and then actually make action steps to go through and do that. And I think that by having that kind of outside person do that, as opposed to administration coming through and do that, there will be more buy-in. Plus, you know, part of our jobs as leaders in our building is to develop leaders along the way, too. And this provides that opportunity for teachers to step up into that leadership role in their own ranks. And I think that that's an important, important piece for our teachers, is to have those opportunities, you know, to develop their leadership skills in their own ranks. But as far as time goes, like I said, Derek and I have looked at it, and for me, I'm, you know, if I restructure homeroom, which, again, I'm very likely going to do next year anyway, I will, it'll be a wash, there won't be any lost instruction this time around by adding PLCs.
In doing this type of, this action plan, would, I don't want to say it's not going to really necessarily standardize lesson plans, but is it, does it make, does it allow you to look into what some teachers are doing, and it's working, this is working for this teacher, and this teacher, you know, something's wrong here, it's not working, teachers aren't, the kids aren't grasping it based on what you're doing?
Yeah, that's a big piece of the PLC process, is, you know, for a group of teachers to collaborate and say, what is working and what is not working? Or what areas are, you know, if you go back to Mr. Bell's comments on the standards-based grading, we're strong in this standard, but across the board, our students show weakness in this strand. Is it our testing? Is it the way we have worded questions? Is there a hole in our curriculum? Is it something that we're just not emphasizing? What is, you know, it really comes back to a research of why we have those areas of need in instruction and assessment and standards. And that PLC process kind of naturally develops this ongoing improvement process. And that's, the whole idea behind this is that this becomes a part of the teacher culture and a part of the school culture, so that it's not just us going in and saying, you know, this test is not good, you guys aren't doing a good job on this, but they're looking at it as, you know, this is an area that there's concern about, you know, what is it that we're missing, or what is it that we can do to change that, and looking at that in a systematic, kind of scientific way, so.
Good conversation. Finish?
Yeah, thank you.
That's a great presentation. Up next is finance report. Mr. Davison?
Yeah, a text from B. It's real brief this month, mainly because of our report today. We've got 25 minutes of finance stuff, and a whole lot more. Then, in effect, after now, our audit is complete. I'll go back and redo the bank recs for July, August, September, as some cashings have changed, just to update the accuracy. Again, total cash balance hasn't changed, where they are within funds will be updated a little bit. So what we have here is a cash flow worksheet, same as you've seen in previous months. Couple things to note on the top there, the bank balance, nearly $3.8 million. And as Matt had talked about, the difference between the cash and the fund balance. This past year, we didn't have to do any cash flow financing or borrowing, and all the funds we have are within our fund balance, our cash on hand. And the reason I point that out is, at the end of the spreadsheet I have here, we have our debt service payments. And in prior years, that's where we had to borrow some funds or make sure that we could make those payments. And we'll be able to make our debt service payments in the end of January, and still have cash on hand without doing borrowing. So from both the cash position, and then from mattering to the audit today, cash fund balance, we're doing pretty well in the general fund, so those are good things to report. He talked about the debt service fund and having to watch that with the levies. In the last two years, we've been able to manually reduce that, we didn't do that with the levy this year, so you'll see an increase in the fund balance for debt service by the time next year's audit comes through. And that is something that we monitor continually. And I'd just like to note, too, and I know it's Matt's gone, but just so that you guys know as a board, too, how a great job Abdo and Myers do with our group, they're very flexible with my schedule, very patient with some of the things that I need to get back and forth to them, and likewise. And we've been doing it together since I've been working as an office, so there's very good communication between two. So I think we get a very good product for what we spend for the services as well, so just want to make sure that's up there. So, beginning next month, again, you'll start seeing the full finance report, completely updated, and then I'll start working on revising and updating the budget. And try to get, at least supportive of where we can kind of see what's going on budget-wise versus actual-wise, to kind of keep a good handle on that. But if there are any questions on what I presented, I'm sure we'll do them to answer.
I'll make a motion for the finance report for a second. Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. No old business, under the new business, we have a consent agenda. Items here, lunch report, personnel items, attendance report. You can enact them in one motion, if you so choose.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Pat.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Approval of expenditures, attachment F. Not smaller than usual.
If you get it down to one line or two, that'd be great.
I thought I would.
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Discussion of the technology infrastructure update.
I can just do this one. You know, I'm going to keep this really brief. I just think, since this is such a big project, I really want to keep everyone on the same page. I wasn't here last time, and I apologize for that. I know you had a presentation on what that was going to entail. I really want it to be clear that the reason why we don't bring these big items to you individually to approve, because certainly anything over 50 years... because certainly anything over $5,000 we would, but we've already planned for this and you approved the main budget. So a lot of those items we bring to you are things that are, oh, we have to buy a bus. We didn't have that necessarily planned for. So I just want to let you know that we are really excited that the Education Foundation has bought us 60 mini iPads and carts that you can charge them on. They also have an access point right on the carts, so we're going to be getting those. There'll be 36 teachers at the elementary getting a regular-sized iPad. And to do all of that, we need to make sure that our, our infrastructure is correct at the elementary. Marco is doing all of that. Tim and Derek both know, both buildings are going to see huge improvement. This has been planned for, for a really long time. You know, we got through all-day, everyday kindergarten, I've said it a million times, technology is our next big one. You saw a project of close to $500,000 this year. It'll be about $100,000 of that which has been budgeted for. So I'm going to keep it really simple at just that, but I wanted you to know that that's where that's coming from. I wasn't here at the last meeting to kind of explain the financial aspects of things. So, you'll see it again next year when you approve the budget as well. You'll see where we're going with the next phase of that, so. Just really excited about the great things that are starting to roll in technology. Okay?
Okay. Moving down to item D, the approval of the spring head coaches. Got a chance to look at that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Approval of the Dorothy Remy Knoblock, Knoblock Scholarship.
You know her as, well, you know her as the maiden name, I'm sure in Kent Falls.
Yes. We have Knoblocks here.
Sure. We're just excited. It's another opportunity for our kids to get some scholarship money for college. You'll see it on the spring when we have our big presentation, but each of those need to run through you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Just a thank you to the family who have coordinated or sponsored this scholarship. Thanks very much.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Having had quite a bit of discussion about item F already, approval to pay a stipend for PLC lead facilitators?
Okay, this is where I have a question.
Shoot.
So, we're looking at the second line there. 18 facilitators?
I just said 15.
Okay, so you're going to 15, so these numbers are not then accurate?
Yep.
That's what he, he said, that that would be reduced.
We estimate it on the high side.
It would be much less than the 96.
Partially because we don't know exactly what Quentin is going to recommend. We set them up how we believe currently would be the best, you know, with a little bit of recommendation from Quentin because we did meet with him. But we wanted to estimate on the high side. So, I, like I said before, I think it's going to be around $8,000 for 2013, 2014. That would include his.
Because we're in, we're in 2013 to 2014 right now.
Yep.
So this will be kicking in the first of the year and it would be $8,000 then from the first of the year till, the end, the end of fiscal year.
It would be more so December.
Calendar year.
So we're looking more calendar year than we are looking fiscal year?
Because of our start date.
Yep.
Okay.
Keep in mind too, we used to have, and you know this from being a negotiator, we used to have department heads and we could never really justify why they would get that, this stipend. This is really well laid out, exactly what their job is going to entail. And as a superintendent that would be paying us, I, I like that. I like knowing exactly what the job description entails.
So then, so then if, if, if we cross out the 9,600 here and we go with 8,000, are we just approving one year or are we approving three years?
If we, that's a great question. You would be committed to the three years. He's coming in, I mean, it's something that we would want to commit to those facilitators.
Can we, can we approve it with?
We're going to have to, we're going to have to approve it.
Approve the stipend, but we need hard numbers to come back to us.
And I don't know if we, I mean, I'm, I'm for this.
Yeah.
I just don't know if I can approve a float. Right now, this is, right now, this is basically a floating number.
Do you think we could do a year and not?
If, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I was just.
If, you know, the, the number that's on the sheet that you're looking at right there is the facilitators and Quentin's fee. So if you want to know what just the facilitator fee is for the remainder of this year, if we're talking 15 facilitators times $200 for the remainder of the year, it's $3,000. So, next year, if we continue with 15, it would be $6,000. And then the 15, 16 for the first half of the year would be $3,000 again, just for the facilitator piece. So we're talking about over the course of the last half of this year, all of next fiscal year, and the first half of the.
12 grand.
At $12,000.
And, and department heads used to come from 10 to 15 per year.
No. You were talking Derek about Quentin coming in and meeting half a day at elementary school, half day at the high school. Is this going to be during teaching hours, instructional period? So when they're meeting, do we need to hire subs in? So we need to add.
It's on the, it's already broke down.
We under sub pay.
But again, that's staff.
That piece comes out of staff bill.
Right. No, I'm just, I'm. I struggled a little bit with the stipend of, you're here to teach, you're here from this hour to this hour. You've got a responsibility, now we're going to sub that pay for those hours. If you said you're going to do a half a day outside of normal teaching, you're getting paid for that extra. But you're double dipping really in.
Yes, but they are going to be preparing for that sub the night before or the weekend before. So.
Plus they have.
Plus they might have outside work to do. So you, I mean, we worked it out hourly and if you, it's going to be way more hourly than getting just like a $200.
Can I make a clarification? There's, it's not double dipping. It would be compensation for more work, right?
The, the compensation is not just for the half-day time. That's, that's the training piece of that. The, you know, the compensation, think of it as outside of normal day, just like anything else that we pay extra for. So, in the long run, again, like Jamie said, you look at it, you know, we pay $22.75 an hour outside of the day for staff. You know, during, over the course of a semester, they're going to be doing far more than 10 hours of work.
For $3,000, you really are getting better. The principals can't be in all those PLCs at once. They can't do that. So, you're really getting almost administrative, and I think one of you mentioned, a leadership role kind of for $3,000. We, we can't even get a fraction of a principal to come in and do that, so.
I know, but I think part of the public's going to be looking at this going, okay, we're, we're paying teachers to be here. They're going to pay them extra to do this extra duty, but it's during the same hours as their teacher contract. As a negotiation.
But the planning for it isn't.
Right. Well, that's, again, that needs to be clearly identified. So as the public stares to go, why are you spending this money? They're being paid as teachers. Why are you paying them? Again, no, they're not. This is for outside of the classroom work. Yeah, I mean, otherwise I think we're going, the public's going to start questioning where we're spending our money.
I think, I think.
And those budgeted.
I think we got administration here now with a, a vision and we've kind of been looking for that. You know, it's like, what can we do differently? You know, where, where do we have, we, we, the whole education system is, is looking for something different. And, and we've got some administrative staff here and the, and the teachers too that have this vision. I say support it, go with it and, and see where, where it takes us.
I just, I'm in complete agreement with you. And, you know, this appears to be some of the best use of our staff development money that we've seen in several years. I've, I, yeah, I've, I've been in support of this since, since day one. So, I'm actually going to make a motion that we approve this plan at $3,000 for the year remainder of 2013, 2014, $6,000 in '14 and '15, and another $3,000 in '15, '16.
I don't know if I want to motion with exact dollar amounts.
Yeah.
Makes me a little nervous.
Well, see, that's, that's where I struggle though. Don't we need something? Don't we need to have a, do we need to have a set amount? Because basically what, that, that was my point. That was my point. Basically, I, I understand, I understand all this coming out of, you know, the fund and, and development and all the rest of the stuff. But basically, without that, it's, it's kind, it's voting on a floating dollar. And that's where I might have, I'm, I'm full support. I just don't know if I can, do you, do you know?
We're okay with that.
So not to exceed?
Not to exceed, was what I was just saying.
How specific do stipends have to be approved? I remember you did that research at one point where stipends have to come through the board. How specific do they have to be for approval? Do you remember?
I don't know. What did you add up to there? I just, I just went $3,000 for '13, '14.
You're approving $200 per semester.
Yeah, I'm, I'm per year, yeah, per year, $200.
You just adjusted the numbers from what they were to the 15, so 18 to the 15.
Again, I, I feel like if we just trapped them in that and we don't give them a latitude to increase, I'd feel bitter about it.
We'll have to come back to you. That's okay.
I just don't know what the criteria is.
Well, how would you, how, how would we?
If it was open that is approved or?
Not to exceed the 96.
An hour amount or?
Is that what we're asking for?
Well, I was, I, we, what we're looking for is just approval of $200 per semester, per facilitator with the recommendation that.
For three years.
We're looking at 15 facilitators, but if Quentin says we need 16, we still want to pay that 200. So ultimately, I guess.
Why don't you make your motion?
That's, that's, that's what I'm going to do then. I'm, I'm going to amend my motion. My amended motion. I'm going to amend my motion to approve the $200 per facilitate, per facilitator. Per semester, is that what I'm looking for? Per semester and fund this project.
I'll second.
For three years.
We have a motion by Pat and a second by Jerry.
It's good for three years.
It's good for four semesters.
Four semesters.
One semester this year.
Why didn't you get that?
It runs into three secretly, but it's four semesters.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Approval to start a trap team. Beth, review.
This is exciting. We'll turn it over to Jake, but this is really exciting stuff. And we've got a high school principal that's pretty darn happy about this, since he shoots a lot of traps.
In the last year or so, we had, I've had a handful of people contact me and I don't say that's too involved. Starting a trap team is actually the fastest-growing school-age activity. It's not a state high school activity right now. It's Minnesota State trap shooting competition or something like that. But this year, they do have a state tournament actually too, so it kind of is a, they're kind of partnering with the Minnesota State High School. Everything would be done off-campus. No guns would ever come on campus. We would not transport kids. They would pay for all their shells, all their targets, all the fees. Comes out to be, on average, I think the guy we're looking at having do it would be about, he, he figures it would be about $235 per student to do it. I know it's very popular in other communities around here. I think Zambroda, I believe, has one. Kenyon has one. Fairbough BA has one. I believe Fairbough Public Schools has one. So, very popular. Like I said, everything would be done off-campus. It's all virtual, so you shoot as your team. You know, then you have to do your scores on the computer and then you compete that way. Anything else?
Would, would they be competing as, like Kent Falls Bombers?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And then, so, so there's no, right now, it's not set up for a state high school league. So obviously, there's no high-waith of HBL affiliation here. But then, would they be setting up to get together with Zambroda and the Fairbough schools?
It's all virtual.
You don't shoot off against each other to?
That, that, you're paired, teams are paired online and you always shoot at the same club that sponsors you.
Okay.
Whoever is in charge enters the scores online and that's how the competition is done. The only thing where you ever get together is that state meet at the end of the, at the end of the year.
So what's the cost of, you heard from the district for this?
Zero. Zero. So, maybe you just need approval to start it. We did a preliminary like interest, you know, who would sign up for it. And I think we started on Wednesday last week. There's over 30 kids signed up already.
The stats show that no one's ever been injured since the.
The nice thing about this is six, well, boys, girls, doesn't matter. There is no breakdown that way. As long as there are 10, or as long as you have a sponsor for every 10 shooters, then.
We've actually got a.
What's that?
Mr. Noah responsible.
It's an advisor of the Fairbough BA team.
Please excuse this interruption, but if there's a Heidi Anderson in the building, would you please come to the office? Heidi Anderson, to the office, please.
Stubb, you're dying to speak, but we're running through this without any interference at all.
It's okay. I got stand-up, so I can see it. Yeah, I'm the head coach of the BA trap team. We started it, we've done three spring seasons and two fall seasons. We just finished up end of October. All the information is correct. It's, you're doing it virtually, online. You, basically, you find a home club, which I think Greg Tweed has talked to, one of Minglo and some other places. You know, you can break the cost down to, it's going to take a couple flats of shells per shooter. Usually, the clubs will charge their membership rates and usually that's $4 to $5 per round for targets. So the cost thing works out pretty good. And also on the other side of the cost, not only not costing the district anything, but you can start to tie in with Pheasants Forever and Midway USA, the Shooting Sports Foundation. And we did a, it was a five-gun raffle. It was last spring and we had 200 tickets, $20 a ticket, or 250 tickets. I don't know. Worked out to five grand, anyway. Three kinds of people in this world, those who can tell and those who can't. What it did, with, with the Shooting Sports Trust Fund, what, what they did in Midway USA, Larry Potterfield and his wife, they started this foundation and they matched us three to one. So there's a trust fund with $20,000 sitting in there and we can drop 5% a year off of that. And you can keep building that fund. They have iPad raffles. They have all sorts of things along with, you know, hitting, we've hit up some of the local businesses and that sort of thing. And really, it hasn't cost the school anything because I know where I'm at. If, if it would cost them a dime, it would, it wouldn't have flown. And we kind of got in under the radar anyway. I kind of have a tendency to just do things and then secure approvals.
Is the, is the shooting, the, the shooting club out here that I ride my bike by all the time, is that not adequate or?
No, it's not really adequate.
Not adequate, okay.
It's, I'm a member out there and it's more kind of a fun thing. The guys go down and play around, but we, the, the setup isn't, just isn't quite right for that. You want some sort of either an automatic throw or whether it's voice-activated or button-activated. And one of Minglo has that. I've shot down there before. It's a nice club. And like I say, I don't know which club they're going to pick, but that's a close system. It's easy to get to. It's, you know, it's one day a week. We went from shooting on Monday nights to shooting on Sunday mornings for some reason that we pick up our track and baseball kids do. So, there, there are some schools will, you can let her in it. I haven't set that up at ours yet, but.
I was just wondering, there's a liability insurance. Is that in that whole cost?
Every, every public range has to carry their own insurance, so that's all covered under that. And because where we're sitting at, we're, you know, 10 or 15-minute drive from Fairbough. So, our kids are doing their own transportation. We get a lot of the parents coming out. They'll help pull birds. They'll score, whatever.
Let's say something, someone got hurt out there, whatever it may be. Because they have, with you, where you, you are, can you carry the name and not have a liability on the district or the school because you carry the name? Kent Falls Bombers, trap shooting and the district's not.
That's a question for somebody a lot smarter and more legal. But what I do know, and I've had to go through this, is because all the public ranges do carry their own insurance. They have to carry insurance by law and it covers everything. And again, you know, like the, our coaches will get together and we'll talk to, you know, you have a better chance of getting airplane badminton than you do trap shooting. And you have to go back, I think, over 30 years before you can find an actual accident in a trap range. So those, and those are very valid concerns, but it's, it's safe to support out there. I've, I've been to the state clay target trap meet, the state meet, the last three years. Last year, we had, oh, I'm trying to think of the number, like 16 or 1800 kids shooting over the course of three days. It was the largest shooting event in Minnesota. There wasn't an accident of any kind. It was, it's incredible. You, you show up on Saturday and you've got, you know, 900 kids shooting that day. It's fun. And they, and there's, it's at Alexander and they've got 20-some traps, every one of them's full of kids. It's, it's really a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make motion to approve the trap team.
Well, you're too, you're too late.
Am I late?
Idol talk going on.
Idol, you can't idol.
Jerry motion and Pat, and Pat had second on. I would count the discussion going on after that. It was right after I shaved last night.
And to further discussion, so we have a motion and a second to approve the trap team. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
I was going to ask a question. I felt like I've been asking too many questions tonight already.
No one said that.
You've implied.
Consideration to approve the posting and hiring of a receptionist position for the district office. In keeping with the, where the district is going and expenditures and such that we looked at in our audit, Beth take this over.
Yeah, we're removing this item. Basically, we, I think one of the nice things we heard tonight with the audit was that we are always looking for cost-effective measures. It's, it's what we do. And I like that you guys challenged me when I send you out what a secretary would cost, what a new contract, what a receptionist would cost. I'm, I'm grateful that there's a lot of good questioning on that. With that said, we've looked at a, a fourth option and I think it's the smartest one to do is we have a cashier that works out of Tim's office right now. Her job could be moved to that location and change nothing else. The phones would still be routed down to the high school. Nothing in the job would change and we could change her location. Mr. Hodges may have to get creative in how a middle schooler can bring his money down at lunchtime because typically they don't walk down the hallway. But we think with the amount of kids that are dropped off here on the bus, that they can still get their money to her. This is a zero cost, but solves our problem of having someone physically in the office. So with that said, I'm somewhat removing this or if you want to take a motion out that we, they remove the high school cashier down to that position.
Is that, is that something we have, is that a decision we have to make or is that a decision?
Um, not really. If we were to hire, you do have to make a decision. If you'd like to just remove this item, that'd be fine. We've, since the agenda's come out, we've found a solution for you at zero cost.
A good solution at zero cost. So. Next, item H. Yep, so we can just make that. We don't have to take a formal motion, do we?
It's on there. That's.
I'll make a motion that we, 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 we remove item H, consideration to approve the posting and hiring of a receptionist position at the district office.
Sure, close enough. I'm never sure on this one. This is all both. You second Kurt?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second essentially to rescind item H on the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There's no discussion.
Carrie. So approval to hire a candidate for the full-time custodial opening. I wonder how that's different from the approval we put on the personnel for the full-time custodial.
It's not. We had a resignation. We're now hiring one. Dave interviewed and hired somebody. It's the same.
Same.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, have we approved this? Have we approved this then?
You approved us to go hire one? Or you?
He was listed in the personnel.
He was listed for personnel.
So we don't need to deal with this?
It's on here. We got, I'll make a motion.
Kurt already first and I seconded. You guys in your idle chats.
Kurt made that motion.
I heard it.
Who made that second?
Rob was the second.
I did.
We're idle talking.
Yes.
Chit-chat.
No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
I'm hoping we can get Stephanie to do that.
Approval of the first reading of the revised policy. Two oh eight.
Yeah, this one you've had. You've looked through it. The reason why the policy committee does not have to meet on this one is this is a very, very standard policy that comes out. We have to have it approved by the board. There's, there's nothing to alter on it. If you have any questions on it, I can certainly answer it, but the next one gets a little more interesting.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That is carried. Item K, approval of the first reading of the revised policy five sixteen.
Again, we have our nurse Pam here. If you have any direct questions, we'll, we'll have, send those over to her certainly. You're aware of, when we came back with the legislative updates, when I kept bringing those back, you would see that listed on there, that there was going to be some pretty big changes in that area. And they did do those changes without a lot of language that went along with it. Lori found out yesterday or today that MSBA now does have language that they're going to be sending out that'll be matching with this. The confusing part on that is you have to have two readings in before January one, when it goes into place. I think by having it on the board agenda, that that shows progress to having policy related to EPIPENS.
So is it going to change?
It, it may tweak a little bit unfortunately, but with that one being kind of unique and I want to make it wording, we would want to run that one through the policy committee. I think, you know, we may not just adopt the state one on that. We may want something to be kind of unique because Pam has a, a really good solid grasp on this and may want something to be a little tweaked. So if we change something from MSBA's model, we'll bring it back to in a different format, but I think for right now, it, it's good to go ahead and prove what we, what we have down here.
I'll make a motion to, for the first reading of the EPIPEN.
I'll second.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. Anything to add Pam?
Good. I appreciate you coming.
I'm sure you have questions.
I'm so grateful you're here in case we did.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, we'll, we can refer back to scheduled presenters. Sherry and Jack are here for a building update, I believe. If you'd like to come forward. This is your second presentation of the evening, I hear, huh?
Yes.
It is.
Those people are fine.
Every time we would sign it.
What Sherry's handing out is we added a, a front side to the summary that probably went out in your board packet.
Yes.
Front side.
Yeah, we're going to call it a front side. So we'll, we'll go over that side first, the one, the, the bullet point side.
All right. Well, thank you for having us return. This is kind of, we've been at this little journey for about two years now and we have some updated information to bring to you. Rob actually heard this last week. He sat in as an alternative for Brenda at the board meeting, so please feel free to add or, you know, not. So on this backside, you'll see kind of a summary of where, how we got here. So year after year, we have been running out of space. You'll remember about four years ago, we were out of space at Wastito and Jefferson, and so at that point we added Riverside to the mix. We again ran out of space going into this fall and we are actually leasing a fourth area from the Red Wing Public Schools at their Twin Bluff Middle School site. Going into next year, right now with our current numbers, we're looking at needing two additional classrooms. Our current facilities are also falling behind on deferred maintenance and are not well-designed for special education instruction. All of our current facilities have had other purposes for which they were built. We have been able to use those facilities and we've been thankful for that, but they were never really designed just for setting for students. If you remember, we had Springstead come in and do an initial study. That study was completed in June. That study included looking at vacant sites that could be remodeled. Lots to build on. Also different configurations of our sites. Could we get down to two sites by remodeling one of ours and funding another two? Par. The deferred maintenance alone was estimated to be six point eight million. The deferred maintenance plus remodel was ten point eight for that option. The GCD board looked at the nine options from the first report and asked us to do a further study to look at building up near Red Wing High School as one option or to build on the Wastito site as a second option. A third option does still exist, which would be to stay in our current facilities. So we really have three options before us. I brought that second study to you. I don't remember exactly when.
First study.
Or that first study, a few months ago. This second study that's now been completed, we brought to the GCD board November twelfth at a work session. So they reviewed it, looked at all the data, came up with questions. Then last Thursday night, they actually accepted that second study. And now I'm going around to all the member districts to share it with you so that you can then have a discussion with your board, rep on the GCD board and try to come to consensus as to how your district would like to proceed. There is no statute that says that we need member district approval on a project like this, but we felt very strongly that we did want member district approval on a project of this magnitude. So we have determined that the GCD board will have a resolution. If that resolution is to move forward, it then comes up to you for your vote on, on the issue. If we have consensus, great. If we don't, then we're going to have to figure out how to get through that and how to move forward. And we'll have to think about what those options might be. So let me flip to the other side. This is really that, was it forty pages, the full report? The full report, you all have that. I know you've had a chance to look at that. It is also on the GCD website. Both report one and report two in their entirety on the GCD website, if anyone does want to look at that. But this is a one-page summary of that report. The board asked me to make it concise. So land availability. There are seven acres available at the Wastito site. That's not ideal. MDE does say fifteen is recommended. But we could make that work and we could build a two-story building and, and we could absolutely make that work. On Red Wing High School, there are several locations if possible. Even on one of those sites, we could decide to build two stories, but there are sites available where you would not need to do that. So on this piece, the feature is listed first, then the Wastito scenario, then the Red Wing scenario, and then who Springstead saw is having the advantage. So this is who the outside firms saw as having the advantage. Site constraints. At the Wastito site, existing power lines may need to be relocated at minimal cost. And the CAP 2020 line we know is going through there. We've gotten a legal notification of that. We don't know exactly how that will impact us. Maybe it'll have minimal impact. At Red Wing, the site is clear. Overhead obstructions. Utilities. At the Wastito site, septic and well, likely new septic would need to be installed. Red Wing utilities are available, but may require considerable length of pipe. What does that mean? What it means is we could actually share those services through the Red Wing plant, so we could have heating and cooling piped to the location and save us some costs there. Roads and infrastructure, the future, Highway fifty-two and County nine, we see that, that should probably improve on the intersection traffic, safety and access. There are also adequate roads at Red Wing. Springstead saw that as equal. Existing obstacles, that sort of goes along with the next one, potential hazardous concerns. At the Wastito site, we would have to demolish a building and there are the underground tanks to remove, as you know. Red Wing, it's a greenfield field site. Operational considerations related to the location. Wastito is more centrally located. You know, if we could move the county seat there, that would be ideal. When Springstead looked at this though, fifty percent of the kiddos are coming from Red Wing. And so for fifty percent of the kids, it's an advantage to be at the Red Wing site. So it was really a wash. For fifty percent of the kids, it's probably better to be at the Wastito site. Fifty, it's better to be at the Red Wing site. So they saw this as equal. Or slight advantage for Red Wing actually, it's like fifty-two percent. Possible shared services. Right now we get food service from you. Beth has confirmed that we could continue to do that. Because of the location near the facility in Red Wing, we could also access parking, grounds, technology, infrastructure, repair, internet service. So there's just more offerings because of that proximity. Custodial, for instance, you go out for some of your custodial or Red Wing hires their own, so there'd be, there could be some crossover in that. Land costs, that's equal. Negotiation still needed. Perhaps an affordable purchase price or inexpensive land leases available. I don't know that. That would be in a negotiation that I would need to carry out with both the Cannon Falls Board or the Red Wing Board as it would be. Staffing, this is also equal. If we got under a one roof option, we would save about a hundred and forty-four thousand in staffing per year. So that's about, that's a negative six point two FTE or fourteen point two percent of the staff. Transportation, if you combine all of the district's transportation, it's one thousand twelve combined miles daily to the Wastito site and it's nine hundred and six combined daily miles to the Red Wing site. For Goodhue and Kenyon, there's virtually little difference between the current three sites and either going to Wastito or Red Wing. Where you see that dramatic differences are for your district, going to either one site is dramatically better for you. And for Red Wing, going to one site is good for them as well. We also think with one site that we could do some sharing of transportation, so it's possible.
I think you said that wrong, Sherry. I think dramatically was for Goodhue and.
Zambroda.
No. Goodhue was relatively equal going to Wastito and Red Wing. Zambroda had, did have quite a variance going from three sites.
When Kenyon's one.
Kenyon had almost no difference.
About a twenty mile daily difference for Kenyon.
From?
From their current situation to either Wastito or Red Wing.
From their current situation of transporting to three sites.
Page eight of the full report, if you have the full report.
Now, are these miles based on students per mile or routes?
Routes.
So it would.
For the students.
Routes for the students based on last year's students. So from the student's house to.
To the.
But if you can pick up eight kids in one route, that would be considered one set of mileage.
Correct. From the farthest child.
And that was data we went back to the districts multiple times until they were satisfied with the data. I wish I could pull that page eight up.
Well, twenty miles a day, times a hundred and eighty is thirty-six hundred miles.
He's doing exactly what I did.
Yeah, it's.
Not nine hundred and six.
Look, yeah, that's for one day. Nine hundred and six in one day. For all five districts.
I guess you'd have to give me some better math than this is.
Yeah, if you look at the chart, you can see.
Yeah, I need, I need to pull up the chart.
This is very unclear.
Okay, so, do you want to go back and grab my iPad because I can pass that chart around today's guest. Then you see the vocational training. If, we currently have, for instance, the Brick House. The Brick House is a restaurant in Red Wing. Students go to the Brick House eight times a month. They do a variety of tasks there, washing dishes and other tasks. Actually, no, all of the tasks they do, I know they wash dishes. If we were at the Wastito site, it'd be twenty-three point, or twenty-three miles both ways, times eight times versus the Red Wing site, it's three and a half miles to the Brick House. So over the course of a year, all of the vocational sites, when you multiply those times nine months and all of the round trips, it is a total of seventeen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven miles from the Wastito site and two thousand six hundred and twenty-four miles from the Red Wing site.
Could they not do something at the site itself as far as program in the school?
They do those things as well already. This is really a, we are really looking at expanding those transition ser, these are really for the eighteen to twenty-one year olds and expanding those services into real work conditions. So you're right, and we do those. We actually are implementing a pays lab right now and other pieces that you would see at a pro act traditionally or ABC, as I know another company that does these services. Some of them are paid, some of them are volunteer. I don't really see the issue as the number of miles. I see it as lost instructional time. So those eight trips to the Brick House, that's there and back, that's eight hours of lost instructional time for those students that month going to that site.
What's us looking? If you could do it right on site, then you have no transportation. I mean, best, even wherever they went.
Right.
If they could do it right on site.
But these are, we actually are looking for opportunities out in the, that would be closer to real life situations for these kiddos. So this is actually programmatically what we want to be doing is making these relationships. Now, if we were at the Wastito site, certainly we could go to Zambroda. Zambroda might have some opportunities. You might have some opportunities. So they wouldn't necessarily be all in Red Wing. We use the current pieces. We have about seventeen relationships right now. Utility and operations, this is slightly in Red Wing's favor, pretty much a wash. Two hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty per year at the Wastito location, two fifty, two eight fifty at the Red Wing location. Again, that has to do with some shared services pieces. Our current operational costs are about three hundred and sixty-four thousand a year. So either new facility would save us a hundred thousand dollars in operational costs a year. Demolition, to prepare the. Demolition, to prepare the Wastito site is 1.6. To prepare the Red Wing site is 1.24, which means that there's a difference in the financing and tax capacity. We have a deficit of 1.6 if we built at the Red Wing, at the Wastito site, and 840,000 if we built at the Red Wing site. There are a number of other issues that we did not calculate, and they were small. That includes mileage costs for staff, duplication of supplies and services, for instance, number of copy machines we need, number of, all of the, the three garbage pickups versus one. You could go on and on with all those smaller differences. So option, the Wastito option, the total cost of that was 14...
14.8 million for the, to build on the Wastito site was 14.04 to build on the Red Wing site. Mostly the difference was because of the demolition cost of the building, the underground tank removal, asbestos abatement.
If you flip over, at my board meeting on Thursday night, one of the things the board said is, okay, what if we decide we don't want to move forward either of those options? What is actually the cost for staying right where we're at? And so we did list that out. We only used the data that was already proven out by Springstead in the studies. So that was the deferred maintenance and remodel, which was 10.8 million. Leasing of additional space, we figured on 30,000 a year. It's currently 15, so...
It's 15,000 for two classrooms, so we figured if we add two more, it'd be around 30,000.
Operational cost savings, I already mentioned those. By coming under one roof, we would save about 100,000 a year, about 144,000 in staffing a year. We did not calculate the mileage cost savings lost, but you're saving about 500 miles across the districts per day by combining under one site. So that staying in our current configuration is 17.65 million.
And the reason we use the 25 years as the multiplier is the certificates of participation or the debt we would sell in order to finance either a building project or the deferred maintenance, that would be the timeframe that would be placed over.
Because you're not saving that 100,000 just once. You're saving it repeatedly, the staffing savings repeatedly.
On the utilities, did they take into account well water versus sewer?
Yes.
And water? Why wouldn't that be a savings in the country? It costs me a lot less.
That I can't answer. That one I would have to...
You might have 50,000, 80,000 dollars septic. You put all the ground in your waters free forever.
And maybe it did, Rob? Because there were a number of factors in there. I don't know, I mean, one might have been better in, you know, overall.
The water might have been better, but then something else.
There was only a...
Yeah, I got, I have the same question, because where would they run the utility? Where would they get the utility from?
We would be running into the Red Wing High School utilities to where they're coming off of right now, so...
Share septic, but how about heat?
Same thing. We would not have a boiler.
They have city water, city...
Right, city water, sewer.
Yep, city water and sewer.
But their boilers are, have enough capacity to cover the others?
We confirm that with their buildings and grounds.
We did. So there's a, I mean, there's very, very little difference between the two. $4.03 per square foot for the Wastito site, $3.89 per square foot for at Red Wing. There were probably some areas where the Wastito site was advantageous. We balanced it all out, that's it.
And I think if we didn't have to put the new septic in out there, it would have been a lot different.
I think they underestimated the cost of hooking up the utility myself in Red Wing versus a water and septic sewer in Wastito.
All utilities will be free from Red Wing, or are they going to be paying a usage?
That was calculated in here. There was a usage.
So here's a big question. What do we gain to lose in Cannon Falls?
Say that again.
What do we gain to lose in Cannon Falls if this goes to Red Wing?
What do you gain?
Other than, other than our taxes going up.
I can help you out with this.
Okay.
Okay, we would lose a lease, basically, out of Wastito. We would have to look at maybe selling that building. I mean, you've heard me talking about that. Looking at market value, we may move forward with an appraisal of the actual area that's more expensive. We would lose some great tenants down at Riverside, but the positive of that is, you know, maybe Mr. Hodges has bigger plans for the ALC to grow. But again, we would lose, you know, they're renting that for 30,000 dollars a year too. So there's substantial buildings in Cannon Falls. I think that's what you're getting at, Jerry, is that those now don't have occupants. To close a building down and just let it be is not wise either. But I'm in contact with people in the County Road 9 situation that's going on out there. Don't get a ton of feedback, they bite, and then they, you know, they don't want to talk about it. So, you know, I think for them to make their decision, and then we would have to go off with that. But yeah, Cannon Falls, and Sherry knows how I feel about this. We've had some pretty heated conversations about this. Cannon Falls has got things to lose, but I think there's a lot of benefit in what she's proposing too, so...
Tuition bills would also be released or reduced.
Because of our staff decrease, your tuition bills to the other district would go down.
So you're going to see that 30,000 that you'd be losing on the Riverside lease. Your monthly bills would also, because on administration reduction, that's a .8 administrator, that's on your monthly bills.
But we haven't seen any numbers on that. I mean, we don't know what that would look like yet.
No, but we know that there's a reduction, but we can certainly prove that out for you, but there, to make up 30,000. We anticipate you would see that in your tuition bills and your...
I don't see a savings of 1,000 dollars in tuition savings. But I, okay, but then I would need to see...
Yeah, I calculated it out for every district just based on the staffing reduction and the mileage savings for transportation at 10 miles a gallon and 3.25 for a price. Every district, even those losing leases, saved money. Anywhere from, it wasn't large numbers, like 4,000, 3,000 a year, but every district did save money, even if I netted out their last lease revenue.
If a student got ill in Red Wing, and maybe this is a question for Sharon, I'm not even sure for you, and don't, Sherry, too, or whatever, but we have to go get them and get them back to their home district so the parent would pick them up.
I don't know what you do now.
The parents go get them now. The parents go get them? Oh, good, okay, that's good.
So if they're building a new facility in Red Wing, how's that paid out? Is it split between taxpayers, between all five districts?
It's split between the five member districts based on enrollment. So you, based on your share of the enrollment in the programs.
Well, there's actually three pieces. Still comes out basically as the same ratio. Student enrollment is one of the three factors. Child count is the second of the three factors, and enrollment in the setting fours is the third, okay? So theoretically, if you have the lowest student enrollment, the lowest child count, and the lowest enrollment in Goodhue, you're going to be paying less for this building than Red Wing. So for instance, Goodhue's portion is about 107. Red Wing's, I think, is 4...
50? 450 a year.
450. 450,000, 107,000.
Locked in or adjust annually?
That's a great question. We haven't, I guess we...
We haven't discussed that with...
We could certainly make it...
The way they're projecting it now, it's locked in, but...
But our lease levy has to be entered every year. Theoretically, we could adjust that if you had a, you know...
So if we lost a district, for example, we would all absorb more percentages to begin with, and then if our enrollment went up or down, it would adjust accordingly.
We could build an adjustment.
Right, because what if one of the districts decided to go to a different area? Say Canyon decides to refer.
Yeah.
I don't think that's likely. We could get into a situation, because we've decided to go out to the members, that we have one district or two districts that decide they don't want to build, and we've got three that decide they want to build. You know, the superintendents and I are going to have to sit down and decide some next strategy and figure out how we're going to move forward, because I'm guessing the three that want to build will be dug in, and the three that don't want to build might be dug in, and it could be an interesting situation. You know, for, you know, you and Red Wing are in a unique position, and the other three are in a unique position. If you are the other three, choosing the third option...
Can I have your attention, please? Conferences have now concluded for the evening. Thank you and have a good rest of the night.
If you're Canyon Wanamingo and you go with this third, or you go with, let me say, I'm not going to say this right. Help me out. If you're Canyon Wanamingo and you decide to go with this third option, I was saying that right.
If we stay where we are, and we decide to remodel and do the deferred maintenance.
Your taxpayers are actually supporting improving your buildings and improving Red Wing's buildings, buildings that they don't own.
They don't have an ownership interest in. They're asking their taxpayers to...
Improve your buildings.
Pay, yeah.
They may not have an issue with that. I don't, that's certainly something we were asked at the board meeting we were just at. If you go with one of these two options, that building is joined, and the land is, the land and the building are owned by the five districts cooperatively. Now, we do currently have language for if we do lose a district and if we add a district that's currently in our agreement. We are looking to strengthen that, because we could potentially add districts too. Those are great questions.
As a district, do we lose out on any type of grants, funding, since it's not in our district anymore?
No, this, that would not change. That would be parallel to what you've got right now with Goodhue Canyon District. If anything, it gives us power to be all five of us together. Jackie can run those numbers free very easily too, but the money that we gain from being united is much better than if we stood alone.
Anything else? Rob, can you remember any other questions that came out of the meeting?
No, I think you covered, I mean, the one change that they wanted to see was by not moving at all was one of the questions that I, I pretty easily would have asked. Was that Canyon Wanamingo?
I think it was Paul Cramp from Red Wing.
When do you vote?
Well, depending. You know, this is not something you can rush, but if my board members feel like they have sufficient input and know where their district is, we could potentially vote on the 19th of December.
And then it would come to us in January.
Then I would go back to you in January as well.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Please, in the meantime, if you have any questions, send them to us. We will certainly respond. And Jackie can certainly send out that cost savings for your district. It might not be about, is it saving you? You want to know that you're not losing, and so that could help prove that out.
And the taxation portion of it, you know, is this $14,000, $100,000, or 17,000?
That's all in the report.
In the report.
I don't remember your number. It's somewhere in the middle of the group, though, and it's, what is it?
I think it's 14 for every 150 or something like that.
I thought you were 16. But it's somewhere around 14, 16 dollars for a $150,000 home per year.
For 25 years.
25 years.
Do you have the presentations out of the storage table? We just...
I have that up not that long ago.
I don't. I mean, it would take me too long to find this.
Okay.
It's like right to the tail, and there's a grid like this, and it lists each district, and it shows your lease levy capacity, and then it shows how the impact on a $150,000 home. Okay? We are running about two months behind on this. We had initially intended to bring this to boards in October, but there were reasons why we decided it was better for everyone if we delayed it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next. Next is officially reports, but this isn't our report month, so we're going to not go through that. There was just a couple of items, I guess, the band trip agenda that Tim was going to speak to.
The band directors would like to take the high school band to come out this spring. They've got a really good commission lined up to meet with kids, and it looks like it will be a very pleasant event.
So they go out there and they perform and all that?
Yeah, they meet with the commission, and I can't remember what their performance was going to be, but it was part of that meeting time.
Okay. Sips, this is not our report month. That would be the end of that. There you go, you're done. Sorry. You are done, aren't you?
Oh, I'm done.
I thought so. Items for the upcoming scheduled December 16th of the Truth and Taxation Hearing, approval of the final levy cert, and presentation by Employment Service, whatever that is.
It's background checks.
Interested employees.
Background checks.
If you have anything else that you would like to see on that December agenda?
Lunch?
Yes. Please talk with either Beth or Lori and get those additions put on. Public forum. Anyone wish to speak to the good of the cause? No, is that it? Okay?
Could I just ask if it's possible, Beth? Can, is it possible that sometime in the near future, before the beginning of the year, early part, just to have a finance, can we meet and just get together?
You bet, absolutely. We typically do try to have one after the audit. I mean, have one prior to that, it's kind of, yeah, I think Josh and I can definitely work, because it's kind of nice to know when that audit comes in where that's officially at.